We are ready.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for March 9, 2022. It's a little after 6 o'clock. I apologize because I got here a little late. We're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have one public hearing this evening involving zoning on North Third Street. Roll call, please.
Moller.
Here.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Flower.
Present.
We're going to start off by offering a prayer by Councilmember Susan Vaughn following the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
If everyone would please join me in a moment of silence and solidarity with the people of Ukraine and for all who are suffering in the wake of the war. Thank you. The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have three special presentations this evening. First one is engineering projects update, Department of Infrastructure.
Yeah, that'll be presented by Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, citizens of Hamilton. We are continuing on our efforts to keep everyone updated on our traffic and street resurfacing projects that are ongoing. Which one? It should work. So the first project I'm going to discuss is the central base traffic signal system. The contract was awarded last fall. Contractor is currently on a pause due to supply chain issues, but they are still on target to complete the 27 priority intersections by June 1. And just for your information, I have the next three slides are the locations of those priority intersections are primarily the High Street, Main Street, and MLK corridors. I know there's been a lot of interest from citizens and also from others about the Northeast Street closure. Currently, we're also being impacted by supply chain issues on that project. We do not have the traffic control panels delivered yet. Those are supposed to be delivered by the end of this month. And once those are delivered, then the contractor will be back on site to install those. And we need those traffic control panels and the traffic signals operational before we open B Street. And the intersections affected by that are B and Main, B and Park, B and Black, B and Ray, and also Black and Third. Our anticipated opening date right now is going to be sometime in May. We'll keep you informed on that project as well. And then a quick update on the concrete repair and resurfacing project. The contract that was awarded to Proust Construction, they're currently working on catch basin replacement in Fairway Hills subdivision. They're also starting and beginning the concrete curb sidewalk drive approach on Elmont Avenue. The Sanders Drive, Leo Drive project, the water main replacement is going to be completed soon, probably within the next month or so. And then the contractor will then start on the catch basin replacement and the concrete repair of curb sidewalks and drive approaches after that. And then following then the milling and resurfacing of Sanders, Leo, Carroll Court, Kelly Court, and Hermay. Corin Avenue Utility Project, the utilities are nearly complete. We had a meeting last week with the contractor to get their schedule started up for the spring and what they're going to be completing. Following the utilities, they're going to be working on the concrete repair of curb sidewalks and drive approaches that have not, that were not done last fall. And then the milling and resurfacing of Corin Avenue will follow. The next project was just awarded this, this year to R.A. Miller Contractor. Contract's $1.88 million. It's slightly higher than our estimate. They're scheduled to begin in June of 2022 and then be complete late this fall. And we reviewed those projects last, at the last council meeting. Council meeting occurred just before the bid was opened, so that's why I just wanted to update you on the contractor and the, and the bid amount. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Engel?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Rich, the lights, is that going to include the Main and E Street? Are we going to be putting a light there, we said? At Main and E? Where it's going to be a rise?
Well, the city staff, our, our staff are actually installing that project ourselves. So that's scheduled to be this summer.
But it'll be, that's going to be the same time you're doing the central lights coming down Main? That's going to be in?
Yeah, we'll coordinate with that contractor, but yes, it'll be part of that system.
I heard we were putting that in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Rich, this little bit, it's on topic, but not quite. I, I still receive calls and with TV Hamilton here and people viewing and streaming what we're doing, can you remind our citizens the schedule once the street levy was approved and how the money was accrued and then when those projects actually started?
Yeah, we actually started projects last year. Proust Construction, the one I just talked about, is using street levy funding. The Corin Avenue project is using street levy funding. The R.A. Miller project that was just bid will have street levy funding included as well. The Leo Sanders Drive, we're using Ohio Public Works Commission grant funding for the water main replacement, but the street resurfacing and the curb work will be funded by street levy funding. So we have a lot of projects in the queue. We may not have spent a lot of money to date, but we've actually probably have spent all of the committed funds for the last, for last year and this year in what we've got allocated to projects at the moment.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Couple of them, Corwin Avenue, when will that be totally done?
Be complete?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's supposed to be complete by June of this year.
Okay. And you've got some, I think, signs being put up saying, you know, funded by or?
Yes.
By the street levy. Are those up right now?
They are not. We are, we got those approved. We're in the process of making them and we'll get them out as soon as we can within the next 30 days.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for, for Rich? Thank you, sir. Okay, our next presentation, utility customer rates, presentation by the Department of Infrastructure, Nathan Perry.
I got it ready. Want it right now or at the end?
Yeah, I'll start with that. Good evening. I'm going to start tonight with a brief video we put together. We wanted to get a video out there kind of explaining our utility bill, and we're going to put this out on social media so residents and businesses kind of understand what's included on their bill. So we'll start with that first.
Rhonda Levens, I'm a supervisor at the City of Hamilton Utility Office, and I'm here to walk through your utility bill with you today. The top right-hand corner, you're going to find your name, the service address, your account number, your billing date, the amount due, and the due date. Now, the account number is going to show up a few times on the bill. So this is a very important number to have, so for a couple reasons. If you come to our kiosk machine and you forget to bring your bill, you're going, you can look up your address with that account number. Also, if you pay by invoice cloud, we'll ask for that account number and your last name. So like I said, it's a couple times on this bill, so you might want to have that handy for when you do make a payment. In the bill summary, you're going to see the list of all the services that you're currently paying for. So this will also fluctuate depending on where you live at in the city. So most homes in the city include all services, electric, gas, water, sewer, and trash. Some apartments, though, may only include electric, some may only include water. There's also some homes that have two water meters. So that will fluctuate depending on where you live at. In the message center, you'll want to read through this monthly. There's some helpful hints on how to save on utilities. There will also be some things that are scheduled throughout the city like our hydrant flushing or our leaf collection. And then we do also post some city events. Recently, we had the Holly Jolly Hamilton, and it had a list of all the events that were going on in the month of December. At the bottom, you're going to see the payment portion. So if you do mail in a check, you want to include this with your check. It also has your account number on there, so it's another place where you can find your account number. The easiest way to make your payment in real time is to go on our website and set it up for auto pay. That way, it is debited out of your bank account on the day that it's due, and you don't have to worry about any delay there. We also offer pay by text. We accept Visa, MasterCard, Discover, Google Pay, and Apple Pay. If you do like to pay with cash, we have two locations where you can pay with our kiosk machines. We have two located here at 345 High Street, and the other is located at the All Wealth Credit Union on the corner of North Brookwood and Northwest Washington. That one is actually open 24 hours and has a drive up, so you only have to get out of your car for that location. On the second page of your bill, you're going to see some safety tips about gas odor and maybe some power lines that are down. So if that ever happens, if you do smell gas, or if you see that our power lines are down, we ask that you call us right away and or call 911. Either way, we will have a tech out there to you as soon as we get alerted from that. The next part is the explanation of the bills, the wording on there. It kind of goes over all the different meanings of the words that we're using on all the bills. Some of these words don't pertain to everyone, so just keep that in mind. You might not see that. And the next section is agencies that we would refer our customers to in the time of need. And then on the third page, you're going to see a little bit more about the bill. You're going to see when we actually read your meters. You're going to see the dates that this was from. So like on this particular bill, it's from January 14th to February 14th. So this bill has 32 days. And again, you can also find your account number on this page. The itemized section here has all the different services that you have at your location, and it gives you just a breakdown of what every charge is. And then we have the graphs next to that. So one thing to keep in mind when you do look at the graphs, you want to have at least one year of consumption to kind of get a better look, better feel what your consumption habits are. So at any time that you need, any questions answered, or if you have any concerns about your bill, please know that you can give us a call. You can call us, you can email us, you can come visit us at 345 High Street. Just know that we're local, reliable, and we're yours.
All right, well, thanks. I wanted to thank Steve Caldwell and Jacob Stone and Rhonda for helping coordinate, putting this together. We're going to get this out on social media, and hopefully it'll be a nice tool for our residents and businesses to understand what we're, what our bills are about. So I wanted to run through a few questions about why bills have, have maybe changed in the past few months. And one of the main drivers there is increased usage for electric and natural gas. So, you know, it's been really cold the last couple of months, and even if you're keeping your thermostat at a constant temperature, it has to work harder, longer to maintain that temperature in your home, and that drives up increased usage on our customer bills. So, but in total, our utility rates have not increased in total for the average customer. It's just been the usage that has changed. Now, we haven't adjusted our water or wastewater rates since 2020, and we're in the process of a cost of service study right now on those two facilities, taking a look at the expense needs and the capital needs for those. We may have some recommended changes to those later this year, but as of now, those, those rates have not changed. And so, you know, on average, our customers have used about 1.5 times more energy, electricity since, when you compare in February to November. So it's been a large increase in, in customer usage. And so this, we see this occur every year, kind of come out of the summer months, and you get into November, December, and your usage is relatively low. And then as the, the winter heating need spikes, we, we see that increase in January, February, and March. And, and then those bills start to come down in, in March, April, May, as we get into the more mild temperature months. And again, as Rhonda kind of pointed out in, in the bill, we're billing in arrears, so your March bill is really for February usage. When you're taking a look at that, you kind of think, you know, it's not for how weather is today, but it was for what I use the prior month. And, and it's the, really the same picture on natural gas as well, but natural gas, customers are using very little natural gas in October and November, mostly for probably heating your, your water. And you see a very large spike in that in the winter for, for heating needs, and that can drive increases in, to your bill. So this is just a little bit, we, we track weather every month, and you could see January and February, the temperatures were quite a bit cooler than November and December. And we also track what I would have called degree days, so we're taking a look at the cumulative temperature need, and, and as those bars are higher, that's more need for heating in your home to maintain a constant or comfortable temperature. So Rhonda showed this in, in her video, but this is a kind of a summary, this is a summary actually of my bill for, for last month. And you can just see in, in real time on your bill what, what I'm showing in those graphs, where you're not really using any gas in these summer months, and then you get a really increase in usage in the winter months. And then the same with electric, where most of your need for electric is in the summer, but we do see spikes in that usage in the winter months as well. And so what's, how's your bill change from last March to, to this March? In February, we, we implemented the fourth step of an electric rate plan. And so in that, the fixed charges went up $2 a month, but also our usage charges, so that's our energy charge and our power cost adjustment, those, those went down during that time. So we, we increased our fixed charges and we reduced our usage charges. So overall, your bill has, your electric bill has decreased during that timeframe. Thank you. So if, for an average customer who has all of our services, and those are included on your bill, water, wastewater, gas, electric, your, your bill at this time last year is around $270 in 2021, and, and it's slightly lower than that now with our rates in 2022. Sorry, you're going to have to go again. So how can residents lower usage? We, we put out a lot of information in our bills, and that's a great place to just be watching for tips and tricks of how to use less. But one way to do this is adjusting your thermostat when you're away from the home. So we've got a Nest, but there's also programming thermostats that are very affordable that you can install and have that automatically adjust, or when you leave, you can adjust your usage down. The Department of Energy recommends, says if you adjust down seven degrees during that time, you can save up to 10% on your annual energy bill. We usually ask customers to adjust back two to three degrees when they're out of the home or at night when they don't need that. And you can really see that accumulation effect over the, over the period of a year. And then the next one is, is maintaining your heating and HVAC systems, so replacing that filter. You know, I, I buy the cheapest ones that I can find for mine, and I just replace them every month. So that just helps airflow through, through your system and it helps it operate more efficiently. Then you can insulate your attic, find and seal leaks around windows and doors. And in the winter, take advantage of the sun, keep your curtains open, let the, let the sunlight heat your home. And then you can upgrade to more efficient appliances as well. And so then how can we, how can customer service help? So we're, we're here for you, we're here for our community. So we want folks to call if you, if you need to understand why your bill increased or have concerns about what's going on. We'll take the time to walk through that with you, help you understand what's happening. We even go out and sometimes visit residences and help them, and businesses, and help them identify ways that they could use less. We also recommend budget billing, so we'll, we'll give you an even amount of bill every month. That way, you don't see those spikes in your budget, you can pay a consistent amount every month. And then, you know, we also do this with our businesses as well. We have a key accounts program run by Mike Ger. We're, we're routinely meeting with our businesses to help them identify ways they can be more efficient. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Nathan?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Nate, can you start the even billing anytime throughout the year?
Yeah, yeah, you can start that at any time that you want. We'll, we'll get you on that, that process. So you have to have a zero balance with us, a current balance with us, but other than that, we'll, we'll start that process with you.
Thank you.
And then you're true up on an annual basis from when you start that. And that, and that'll, it'll be a running tally on your bill, so you can always see how much plus or minus that you're behind. And if you're concerned about that, you can call us and we'll make sure that we make an adjustment or take a look at it with you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Nate, several years ago, you told me about the Nest in particular, and we tried that at home now. And like the first two years, I actually had a credit at the end of the 12 months because it really, it doesn't it, it adjusts, it takes, it's like if it senses you're not home for a few days, it will automatically reduce.
Yeah, yeah.
Energy net. So, I mean, I highly recommend doing that because it made a difference in our home.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's great. I've noticed that as well, that it's, well, I also get really, well, my wife's like, hey, you gotta turn that up a little bit, I'm cold. But, but it really helps.
Any other questions? Couple of things. The total utility bill has gone down slightly. Electric has gone up slightly too, is that correct?
No, our electric bill actually went down a little bit. We increased the, the.
Fixed.
The fixed charge, but we lowered the energy charge, so the, the net for the average customer, there would be a slight decrease.
Okay, I'm just looking at something else that I read that I thought we had a lot of increase in rates, but total utilities have gone down a little bit as?
Yeah, I think when we, when we did the, the budget back in the fall, we were projecting a, a slight increase to electric, but, but we've able to reduce that PCA further than what we had projected on the budget.
And the video that you just showed is going to be available on social media, at the Hamilton YouTube possibly?
Oh, so Brandon says it's currently out on our website.
Good.
Yep, and that'll be available for, for customers to, to take advantage of.
And how to save energy in dollars is also, so on our social media now then, I guess, is that correct?
On our website, we'll go out through social.
Okay.
Yep.
And customer service will review customers' bills, correct?
Yep, that is correct.
Great, that's, that's great customer service. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just cut off the phone with Edwin today. In fact, I had a issue with a citizen that had a high utility bill, and I have to say kudos to you guys for, you guys jumped right on it, went out to the house, you analyzed, walked around the house, and tried to figure out what was going on with the bill. So I think that was, you know, we had a good talk today about saving money on there, and I even asked you some questions about my house. But it's, I, I think that was nice that you went out and personally took a tour of the house and gave them suggestions, so, you know, what could be driving up the bill. And I know that with February, everybody kind of complains about the bill because it got cold. So some good points that Edwin talked to me about on the phone and to help the citizen out, so I do appreciate that. We got a great team that goes, so don't, if you're listening, watching this meeting, don't hesitate to call the city and they'll go out and walk around with you. You don't, you don't really need to call us to do it, but I'm glad to take the call, but they'll jump right on it and do it. So I'm pretty happy with that. So, good job. Thanks, Edwin, again for the help.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Nathan.
All right.
Our third special presentation is natural gas utility workers recognized by the Director of Public Works, Jim Williams.
Am I controlling? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, and citizens. My name is Jim Williams, I'm the Director of Public Works. And what I'm, what I'm here tonight is to basically talk about March 18th. March 18th is now a National Recognition Day for our natural gas utility workers. This was started in 2015 by the American Public Gas Association, which is an association that we're a part of. The decision to hold this day on March 18th was made by a poll of the APGA communities, and this is established community throughout the nation. March 18th is a date of the New London, Texas school incident in 1937 that led to the widespread odorization of the natural, of natural gas and increased emphasis on safety. So basically, prior to that day, 1937, the gas was not odorized, and so therefore, it actually destroyed an elementary school in New London, Texas, which was just a very tragic story. Now, if you advance just one slide, there's a link, which is an old link, to the APGA president that basically hasn't been updated. I can show you that, but for the interest of time, I was just going to read, read the information for, to you tonight. So, but this is also on our social media website, along with some of those actual footage from that explosion in 1937. And some of that is longer YouTube-type presentation, but in essence, it's really good detailed information for everyone to peruse and understand. So, "Safety is a vital aspect to the natural gas distribution, and our employees endeavor to make natural gas delivery as safe as possible. This is evident by our team receiving the 2019 first-ever civil, I'm sorry, Silver Level SOAR designation from APGA." SOAR is an acronym for System Operational Achievement Recognition. Only 25 of the 750 APGA members have achieved the Silver Level SOAR designation. This designation recognizes natural gas distribution utilities that demonstrate commitment to excellence in four areas: system integrity, system improvement, employee safety, and workforce development. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Steve Sams, who's my supervisor at Gas and Water, and, and some of our members of our team. Steve will introduce them.
Yeah, my name's Steve Sams, the supervisor for Gas and Water Distribution. Janson Little, regulator tech, and Equipment Operator Phil Markham, just a couple of the faces. We never get to see you guys a whole lot. Mr. Nab's been down there, Mayor Moller's been down there for some retirements, Joshua's with us a lot, and we appreciate your support for our department. But we just want to kind of get to this appreciation thing. We'd like to get the, you know, we, we hear from you guys maybe four or five times with customer complaints, and, and we get, try to get right on those. But we want to know that, you know, the other 360 days of the year, that we're out there providing safe, reliable gas, you know, when the people, it's kind of understated, when they wake up and they're, they're warm, or when they got up, the hot shower, you know, those things don't just happen by mistake, you know? We have guys, we have 35 men and one fantastic lady in our department that, that are providing that resource for you guys. You know, good, dependable, safe gas. We do occasionally have a situation, you know, the outage on Rossville two years ago. We all joined together, city manager was right there, hand in hand with us, and we knew you guys were getting a ton of calls and that, but our guys got that back in service within three days. You know, a lot of the guys were there for 72 hours straight without ever going home for their families. So that's the level of commitment that our department has for this city. And we just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. The days that you aren't getting the calls and complaining because we left their yard mess, or, you know, we've shut down the road, heaven forbid that they had to go around the block, that these guys are out there, they're being proactive, they are, they're, they're very professional, you know? We like, we like to think, and I think he's used this, you know, like the jewel in the crown, right, with the HEP out there. We like to think that you guys are using these resources to sell the further, the further development of this, of this great talent, you know? Spooky Nook coming in, all these different developments that are going on is because you can sell our utilities, you know? We're very reliable, and it's, and it's also a big selling point for you, for the city manager going forward. You know, we're making sure all that stuff's up and running and it doesn't have any outages. So I just want to make sure and invite you So I just want to make sure, and I invite you guys to come down, I'd be happy to take you around myself and introduce you to the people that, that get this done every day, show you the resources that we have out there. You know, we, I like to think that we're compared to Duke, Dominion, you know, all these other big towns, but guess what? We're here, we're local, and y'all have control of that. You know, we're not a big corporation that sends all their money down to North Carolina or wherever they're headquartered. You know, we're right here in town, and that's, that, you know, I think you guys, you know, appreciate that, but I just want to make sure that y'all, y'all were aware. So with that said, anybody have any questions for us?
You want to introduce these two?
I already did.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any one say anything?
I, I don't get any calls. I think that says a lot.
Yeah.
Silence is, is a good thing, but top 25, is that right? So we're, so we're probably first out of the top 25.
Yeah.
We're, we're actually trying to get the gold level now. So Mr. Daniel Flume, who is our gas.
Compliance manager.
Compliance manager, I'm not sure if he's here tonight, but in essence, he submitted that application. So we should, based off some of the criteria, we were praying that we get that gold level, which is also another notch in our belt, so this is a.
Which shows nationally, you know, we're recognized nationally.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
From the APGA, not just the OGA.
So this young man is one of our newer regulator technicians, okay? So he's taken over for, we had one retirement, did we? No, we had two promotions. So Daniel Davison moved on, Sean moved up, and this young man came in and backfilled Sean's spot. This gentleman here is one of the most experienced equipment operators that we have in the department, and, and we just pushed through the purchase of two new backhoes, and this is one of the reasons why, because this gentleman was, he was about ready to run it into my window. So I really thank you all for that approval, and Joshua, thank you for pushing that through for us, because that is a, a big win for, for our operation. All right, so, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, so while, can I move, can we advance to one more slide? So while I got your attention, so this is a big initiative that happens every year within the city, it's called the Gas League Survey. This particular year in 2022, we're going to be focusing on the Section 1 area, which you see in the light green there. So in that area is New London, Potter's Park, Miami Woods, Millville, and Milliken. So essentially, we'll be asking via our contractor, Southern Cross, access into those residential properties, so that we can verify that our gas system is, has integrity. We were in there looking for leaks, and so we have to do this per EPA compliance. If we don't have access or are not allowed to have access, then we will have to shut off the gas, and that's something we don't want to do. So we want to make sure that we communicate, and we will, we'll over-communicate requesting permission to access and, and test the system, okay? So again, that's about 4,000 meters out of the, as you can see, probably, I think it's up to 24,000 total, but we have to do a section each year, okay? So now, and our staff, our actual in-house staff will do the business district. So we use contractors to do residential, and then we use our own people to do the business district, okay? Can you advance one more slide? And this is just a question section.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. Steve talked about the, the gas issues we had in Rossville a couple of years ago, I believe it was water infiltration into the, to the mains, but living a block away, I tried to get down there as much as I could just to talk to folks, because they were out there, as he said, some of them up to three full days, but just witnessing that in action and understanding the impact during a very cold spell, unfortunately, that, that gas had to be turned off for several block area, and the fact that they stuck around until it was operational, I mean, is just a tremendous asset. And Steve referenced being locally owned versus something else, and there's a pride of ownership in that, that they're not going to quit till it's done. So I just wanted to say thank you again to everyone for all that incredible work, and I know you do it daily, and like you said, most people never see it, but I mean, that's the important thing, because if we're not hearing about it, it means it's operational. So thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim, you've got all the pros there, and thanks for being for us 24/7.
Yes, sir.
You're the bad, these are the faces of your department.
I guess the young guys like to go pro, right? Over guys, yeah. Thank you, Jim, for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
And keep educating us, we all appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Now go to audience of citizens, and individuals who wish to make comments may do so during this part of the meeting. If individuals wish to speak just prior to our vote on council floor, they can just tell us who wish to speak prior to us voting on it. Up to five minutes is allowed, and right now, we've got two people who've signed the Audience of Citizens book. Same gentleman on the Audience of Citizens book also signed the public hearing book, which we'll cover that, Jim, in a second. Dan Hancock, you're first, wish to speak?
My name's Dan Hancock, I live at 67 Herman Avenue in Hamilton, Ohio, and I wish if your city council would speak into the microphones. I got VA in the process to get me hearing aids and that, so I can hear you better, but in the meantime, I wish it's all speaking into the microphones that you have in front of you. The thing is, is the city has taken and going to swap lands with Cohen's recycling there, and they're taking 17 acres and cramming it into three acres and that, and Cohen wants to landscape in that, and the city's telling them, you can't do that. And I think that's pretty bad, when this company wants to do the landscaping and that and beautify the place, and we say, no, we'll take, we'll see about it later and that, and hey, maybe let you do it then, you know? Cohen's doing a big favor in that of turning over that land, getting rid of that ice or that across the street from Spooky Nook. I mean, they could say, well, we're going to pull the operation, move it to Middletown, you're going to lose the payroll tax from the people that work there.
Dan, can I stop you right now for a second?
Sure.
I apologize. I'm on planning commission, Neil Cohen was, was in front of us, as well as, I think, one of his representatives. We talked about landscaping, it's not an issue, the city would like to see certain things, Neil Cohen would like to see certain things, that's being discussed. I'm not sure where you heard that.
Well, it's in the papers.
Well, let's just say that I was at the meeting, and it was discussed.
Okay.
Positively, so it does, and the, and the, the, the building's going to look really good, I drove past the area today, there's a lot of positives going on with that, so let this process.
Well, like I said, I was reading.
There will be landscaping there.
Yeah, so, you know, you need to have the paper re-correct their, their things, but, but I'm saying, you know, everybody, everybody in the city.
I encourage the planning commission, audio, but go to your second topic, because I think we got that one, first one taken care of, okay?
And I appreciate the potholes that are being fixed there on Gordon and Gray Street there, and that, that was a wonderful job there. I mean, your car went through a lot of damage and going up and down that street there, because everything was routed on there for detour and that, and I mentioned to the new discount front and that, some things that need to be looked at, and they took it down under advisement there and that, and I appreciate them calling me and that, and so, and Josh has a list of things that we're discussing and working on, and I hope that we're moving forward on them. And I said, I know the city's trying to do, put their best foot effort and that, but like I said, when articles put out, I hope that, you know, that they get the right information instead of being misled and that. So, but like I said, I apologize, but like I said, it's what.
It's fine, I just had to.
It's what, it's what we're reading that, you know, and if, you know, so, but, and sorry about the last meeting and the nosedive there, and that, we corrected the problem here at the podium and that, so you don't trip over, the cords are all wound up and that, so we taped up, so you can't do that again and that.
But Dan, we're glad that you're here, speaking with us again, giving us some, some things that need to be done. I know, and thanks for using our customer service desk to report a few things and get some education yourself. So the system really is working, and you'd be surprised how pro landscaping, how pro tree, how pro anything that's green, this city truly, truly is. You'll, you'll see it once this place starts greening up here in the spring, you'll, you'll start seeing more of our efforts of, of making this truly a great city for, for landscaping, and we are a tree city already, so stay tuned on, on, on the landscaping for, for Cohen's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen, and we're, okay, I, I, I got a brand new, what's my name's brand new itself, 19, 2015, chief wrangler, okay, I'm not a chief patriot, and it's going on on Main Street, and I got, I had serious radio for a couple months, for a year now, serious radio, and it went on Main Street, all of a sudden, just right by the city building and up here, just goes out for about a half a second, and you can't go, can't record the whole thing, you know? Nothing can fix that?
I don't know. Go, go down your list.
Satellite.
That's satellite.
That's satellite.
Mine does the same thing.
Mine does the same thing.
Right here.
I'm saying, why don't they fix that? I mean.
It's, it's a satellite that's three miles in the air or eight miles in the air, whatever it is, Jim.
I'm saying, why can't satellite fix it?
Well, go, go down your list, I think we've got the first thing. Anything else on your list tonight?
That's it.
Okay, well, Jim, I think you also had a, this might take you out and, and talk about some city matters with you. I mean, that's an amazing thing for our city, to, I believe, take our citizens out, you know, and, and, and talk about potholes here, potholes there, and, and, so you had a, a good experience, good customer service experience, I'd expect.
I'm seeing, it's fine, I'm fixing them, but just, I'm fixing them, and all of a sudden, they're chipping out again, you know, chipping out.
Well, we're, we're, we're doing a good job, you'll see more and more of the fixing and all. Did you want to say something, Mr. City Manager?
I just, yes, I was going to ask Rich to take a look into the satellite issue, but I did get a text from the Journal News regarding Mr. Hancock's about the landscaping. He just said that the landscaping variance was not approved, and that was an ongoing issue, so he apologized for the confusion, the way the article was written, but he, he did not think it was written in such a fashion that it said that we were anti-landscaping, but, if that helps.
It's fine. Jim, you also signed, well, you signed the public hearing book about the radio issue.
Yeah.
So, sounds like it's an issue that's affecting all of our citizens, it's satellite-related, those things happen, so.
I'm saying, what kind of, kind of effect?
Well.
People could get.
Maybe with improved technology over the years, it might be okay, but for now, that's what we got.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good night, all.
At this care of audience of citizens, we now go to the consent agenda, where it covers all meeting minutes, all staff reports, caucus reports, and our January financial and investment reports. We are going to committee the whole, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
So I'll set the motion, the regular meeting be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place.
Some moved.
Second.
First one, Councilmember Vaughn, second one, Councilmember Nab, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, and we go into the committee of the whole at 6:48.
So for the caucus agenda tonight, the first item related to the annual action plan, that was supposed to be a presentation done virtually with Zoom, and I, just, there's a technical difficulty with that, and that will be presented at a later date. Our first presentation tonight will be by Tom Vanderhorst, and this is related to the agenda item number two, which is the reorganization of the Health Department and Housing and Property Maintenance Code.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, residents at home. My name is Tom Vanderhorst, I'm the Executive Director of External Services, and this evening, I'm here to present to you an item that has already been at the Ordinance Review Committee, and what we're doing is we're separating the, the property maintenance code from the health code. Why are we doing this? We're separating the sections to have flexibility, who can enforce it? These are rules that, they're, they're all over the place as far as who enforces them. Sometimes the Health Department does, sometimes Resident Services does, sometimes zoning does, so I think that this kind of separates them out, especially with health, the past couple of years with COVID, you know, the property maintenance code is something they used to do that has been split off to Resident Services. So why is this important? The narrower the scope of work, the more focused the organization becomes, and this is very important, especially the property maintenance code. So I think you're going to see this team working on it diligently. I think we've gotten great feedback as we've gone through this process to find out what works, what doesn't work, and how we need to, to make changes. So the background, the proposed separation's been approved by ORC. Once council approves this, more revisions to the property maintenance codes forthcoming, and we've already had talks about some of the areas that we want to focus in. Changes were planned for about a year. Cindy Hogg initially sort of teased us out, and Letitia and her team sort of separated it out, thanks to Tori and Vaughn on this. And the changes also delegate responsibility for the enforcement to the Executive Director of External Services, and this is important, because as the organization morphs and changes, this provides flexibility. So right now, I know this is pretty difficult to read, but just kind of from a high-level overview, the Section 17 of our Hamilton codified ordinances contain both of these, both the housing and the health code. What it's been distilled down to is just the health code piece of it, which is our state mandated programs, restaurant inspections, septic systems, tattoo parlors, that sort of stuff. And there's a new section, which is Section 19, that's being created. So Section 17 is split in two parts, remain in 17, parts go to the newly created Chapter And the Law Department has weighed in on this, and like I said, additional clarifications and, and changes will probably continue on this, this is an area of focus, and I think it makes it so much more user-friendly and easy to follow.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we'll have a presentation for agenda item number three, related to allocating funds to the West Side Little League. This will be done by the city manager, Joshua Smith.
Thank you, Daniel. We have some slides I wanted to share with council as part of this presentation. Well, that does not look like the West Side Little League, that looks like South B Street, but that one looks like West Side Little League. We have the, the photos in there? There we go, thank you. So representatives of West Side Little League came to meet with the mayor and myself a couple weeks ago. They've embarked upon a capital campaign where they are looking to raise $1 million for improvements to West Side Little League. We've included electronically to city council some of the requests that they had, and they broke it into a couple of different buckets. Mr. Teigmann, if you don't mind, sort of flashing through the slides, and towards the end, there's one that breaks it down into different areas monetarily. There we go. So where we really focused our conversations with West Side Little League was under the health and safety part of what they're trying to do. What we're asking council to consider, obviously, we're introducing it tonight at the caucus level to take it to a first reading in two weeks, is to take $300,000 from the ARPA bucket that was put into the general fund and provide that to West Side Little League, primarily for health and safety improvements to their fields. We've asked them, though, to match those dollars to additional fundraising, which they've agreed. You can see that on the health and safety column of the slide that's on the screen, that this is new netting, new bleachers, new retaining wall, redoing the press box, and also the fencing and the backstops. All this was characterized as more of the safety issues, the field conditions and the fields themselves, you know, we've asked them to go ahead and do their best to fundraise for those, but the way the legislative. their best to fundraise for those, but the way the legislation is written is a city would provide three hundred thousand, and even though their goal is a million, we've only asked them to at least match another three hundred thousand. So that would get them a decent way there. I did ask Steve Timmerett Parks and Dave Jones and Finance just to do a quick look at Crawford Woods and the BTW sort of outside area, if you will. And since two thousand fifteen, either through the parks or the city, we've expended over a million dollars on both of those outdoor areas. To be fair, some of that was splash pads, which were expensive, but also dugout improvements, fencing improvements, field improvements. So this would just be a continuation of those efforts for the West Side Little League area. Happy to answer any questions, and the mayor was in the same meeting, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions, council? Thank you. The next one, Mr. City Clerk?
Next up, I'll have a short presentation about the purchase of real property for the Vora Knightsbridge Natural Gas Regulator Replacement Project by our Director of Engineering, Rich Engel.
Number six?
Yes.
Good evening. As was recently discussed about the reliability and safety of our natural gas system, this is one of our projects that we want to move forward with this year. The first slide shows our existing gas regulator located on Knightsbridge. It's on the south side of the street near Nealan Boulevard, and currently it's underground. So we are proposing to raise that system and put it above ground so it's more easily accessible and easier to maintain by our crews. And in doing so, we will need to purchase property from Vora. We have had the property assessed. We've already negotiated the price with Vora, I'm sorry, appraised and negotiated the price with Vora. So all we need is your permission then to proceed with the purchase of the property. Are there any questions regarding this?
I think if it's, if they can get to it easier to fix.
Yes.
That's a safety issue as well, so.
With it being above ground, obviously, we can see if there's any issues developing versus being underground, where you cannot see.
Any questions? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Okay, and then next up, I might have skipped one. Uh, we'll be going over agenda item number four, sublinating chapter three fifteen parades of the codified ordinances. This presentation will be done by Director of Neighborhoods, Brandon Sarver.
I thought I was getting skipped there.
Nope.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like Tom earlier, this item has also gone through the Ordinance Review Commission. You can go ahead. The big news here is we've changed our process for residents and others to apply for special events and parades here in the city. That process was a rather dated process, paper-based process that had to go through interdepartmental mail, which leads to delays and inefficiencies and a number of challenges. So we started meeting with the Police Department, the Health Department, Engineering, and Utilities late last year to work through how to digitize this process and primarily make this easier on folks who are applying, and then also us having the information that we need to more efficiently approve these. So really, the big news is we have a new process for applying for special events. We think it's a big improvement, really, in the process, and generally what you're seeing tonight, if you hit the next one, Daniel, is just some cleanup of that language. So we were able to sit with Letitia and Tori in the Law Department and take that opportunity to review some of the language that we had and make it reflect the current process. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, Brandon, say I walk up to that customer service desk, and I'm gonna probably have to do that, because I'm still digitally not real bright. Want to sign something up for Memorial Day?
I meant to say that, Mayor. Yes, absolutely. The folks at the desk.
On the poster child of this whole change.
The folks at the desk are very, very aware of this process and can guide any resident who doesn't have digital access through the application here at the desk, which is operational starting next week, full-time.
Okay. I've got access, I'm just not smart with it. Thank you, Brandon. I'm gonna probably see you next week, Jim.
All right, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have a presentation for agenda item number seven, related to rezonings on Pleasant Avenue by our Director of Planning, Liz Hayden.
Good evening, City Council and residents of Hamilton. This rezoning that we have on the caucus agenda tonight is pretty straightforward. It's two properties at the corner of Pleasant and St. Clair that are former office buildings. They're medical office buildings, but they're zoned multifamily residential. The, one of the owners explicitly said he wants to keep it office. I know residents in the surrounding area would like to keep it office, and that aligns with our strategic plan, or Plan Hamilton, our comprehensive plan. So it's simply rezoning these office buildings from multifamily residential to office plan development. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you for doing that.
Next up for agenda item number nine, we'll have a presentation by Nate Perry about the EcoSmart Choice Program.
Good evening. So we've got a EcoSmart Choice Program that we want council's consideration on. Really, this is a program that our customers can voluntarily participate in to opt in to a hundred percent renewable energy. And how this works is this is a program that American Municipal Power, who provides a lot of our energy to us, is offering to all of their members, and our customers can choose to opt into that and at various different levels and pay additional dollars to help support green projects in the state and claim that greenness for themselves. Why this is coming up in our key accounts meetings with our top utilities, we have about three or four customers in our top ten electric users who are international. Some of them are American companies, but a few of them are international, and they're looking at their green initiatives and policies and wanting to, to offer a hundred percent renewable energy as part of their, their plant and their facility. And so this is an opportunity for, for those customers to participate in this program and, and claim a hundred percent renewable energy. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. And, and lastly, I'll be presenting the final items on this caucus agenda. So for agenda items ten through twelve, these are all alley-vacation petitions. So the alley-vacation process, whether it's through a resident-led or a city administration-led press process, starts with a petition at the city clerk's office. And so in this case, this is right-of-way that is owned by the city but no longer has, has, have little or no improvements on them. So some of them aren't even paved, but they just exist on paper. These are a lot of times called paper streets or paper alleys. So in this case, for both, for all three of these items, the city had, no longer has any interest in owning these properties. And if vacated, these properties will be evenly divided amongst adjacent property owners. So if it's an alley between two property owners, it'll be split evenly, you know, equally between the two of them. So first, there is a unnamed alley or portion of right-of-way located between five twenty-seven and five thirty-three Ross Avenue. There are no existing utilities within this alley. It's about a hundred seventy-six feet by ten feet in area. And for this item and all the others, the Public Works, Public Works Department has recommended that the city no longer has a use for this property. So for seven sixty-four and three eleven Edwards Street, there's also an unnamed portion of property that's owned by the city. It's a hundred fifty by twenty-eight feet in area. Once again, once again, there are no, there's no interest from the city in owning this property, and there's no existing utilities within the alley. And lastly, nine oh three Gordon Smith and nine thirty-five Gordon Smith Avenue. It's three hundred feet in length and fifty feet in width. It currently provides access to both nine oh three and nine thirty-five Gordon Smith. Both the properties are owned by the same property owner. Last, and once again, there's no utilities within this alley. So for the caucus reports related to these items, the recommendation is that these be forwarded to the Planning Commission for review, a public hearing, and a recommendation to City Council. So if you need more information on these items, these will come back to City Council after the Planning Department and Planning Commission have done further review. So that is the submission, my report on these items. Do you have any questions?
Any questions at all?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So do the homeowners, are they aware of this right now on either side?
Yes. So for, for when it goes to Planning Commission, the adjacent property owners, as well as all the proprietors, I believe, within five hundred feet will be notified via mail. And one of these proprietors actually wanted to go through the formal process as a property owner, and there's a appraisal process, and nobody wanted to appraise the property. So the city was able to go through the city administration's process instead and go through all this. So people are definitely notified for this.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nab, I'd like to share with our viewers, over the years, we, we have attempted, staff has come to council with recommendations for streamlining, and a lot of it was evidenced to us this evening, in taking pages of documents and, and a myriad of processes in streamlining them and bringing them more, if you will, to today's advantages of easy access, if something could be done electronically rather than on paper, if something can be eased by what we're doing with our, our customer service team in the, in the foyer and things like that. We're all witnessing activities that the administration and the team that work with the city, whether it's the guys that are working on natural gas, whether it's the ladies that we've listened to in some of the presentations, the directors and the team members that were with us tonight. I really, really applaud all of the work, and it's, it's cost-effective. It's saving. We're doing more with less, and it's, it's economies for the entire city. We listen to our residents to come to us with issues that they see, and those issues are usually answered by the time the next city council meeting takes place. The activities of staff that actually meet with residents, and when, when Mr. Hancock shared that Joshua and other team members, leadership team members rode with him and, and they got out together and toured the city, and Mr. Lottman comes and talks about satellite, and I said three miles in the air, I meant thirty or fifty or a hundred and fifty miles in the air on the satellite, not three. But those things that we are able to affect and able to change and able to do, some of them are low-hanging fruit, some of them are, are months away in completion. I asked about the streets levy, and when I get calls and they say, "Tim, we appropriated these monies in, I'll say, two thousand and nineteen, and we didn't start the activity until two thousand and twenty-one." Well, we had to accrue that money into a, into a bucket so we could pay for those repairs to take place. And then people say, "Yeah, I guess that makes sense." So please know that the work in the city goes on twenty-four seven, that there are teams of public safety, teams in our utility group, teams in public works, that the roads are being plowed twenty-four seven during the snowstorms of a couple of weeks ago. We're supposed to have adverse weather this coming weekend again, and those same people that make our city safe will continue to make it safe. So I just thought it's better to go on record now and say thank you to everybody again for all the work and everything that's being accomplished. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any other general comments?
Actually, Mayor, if we may, we, there's two more caucus items. I would like council here, just very short reports on items five and item eight, please.
Okay.
Mr. Gunderson will take item number five.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Jody Gunderson. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the City of Hamilton. City staff is recommending entering into an economic development agreement with Luke's Cakes and Custom Cakes and Cupcakes for an expansion at their, their current facility on two twenty-one High Street, the former True West Coffee location. What's very interesting to note about that business is that while it opened its first storefront in fall of two thousand and twenty-one, the owner has been in business since two thousand and twelve and has been working out of his home, and it's been a very going business, which has precipitated the move to High Street. One of the conditions of the loan is job creation. Another condition is that those, those loan funds be used within a certain geographic area of the city. What I would say is on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Hamilton Community Improvement Corporation approved this project for consideration by the City Council, and the documents will be prepared for the next city council meeting.
Jody, can you tell council how many new jobs are being created?
There's gonna be three new jobs created with this, well, three full-time jobs created with it, as well as three part-time employees.
Do you know what that would bring his total to with existing plus what should be created?
Yeah, there's currently three full-time. That would bring it up to six, and then ten part-time employees.
It's my understanding that the expansion is going to help him. Obviously, he has a bricks and mortar business that faces High Street, but he has a very robust internet sales business also.
And really, it's, and the Community Improvement Corporation looked at this business as well and saw this as a great mix for the corridor. You know, we're looking for that, the mix of businesses, retail businesses, that will increase the walkability, that will get people curious about getting out of their car and going up and down. It's not just one type of business, one restaurant. We also have retail shops, and this particular project is, he's a very talented young guy, and they make a very good product. I feel he'll do extremely well there, and which necessitated his expansion.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, while we're still in the committee of the whole, does anybody wish to pull any one of those items out of the caucus agenda for separate reading and a separate vote? Do you want to do that?
Sure. I'll make a motion to pull caucus item number twelve.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can we go back to the regular meeting?
Okay, I didn't know if I'm gonna do it before after, because it's, I mean, it's been a little bit different lately. Please come out of the committee of the whole. So I'll set the motion, and we come out of the committee of the whole, please.
Salute.
Motion, my councilmember Pullman, second my councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. I'll set the motion, and the regular meeting be reconvened. So moved.
Second.
My councilmember Nab, second my councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven to zero.
Okay. Now, is there a request to pull an item off of the caucus agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, which number, please?
I'd like to pull number twelve.
Okay. National purposes of standing for voting on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, City Law Director, should we have a separate reading and a roll call vote on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for item number twelve, correct?
Yes, twelve.
A recommendation relative to a petition to vacate a portion of unnamed right-of-way between nine oh three Gordon Smith Boulevard and nine thirty-five Gordon, Gordon Smith Boulevard situated in the first ward of North Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant.
Is there a motion that council receive that report, number twelve, and concurrent as recommendation?
So moved.
Second. My councilmember Fear, second my councilmember Nab, roll call vote on number twelve, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Abstain.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion's adopted, six to zero.
Okay. But no longer number twelve on the list there. Is there a motion that council receive the other reports of the consent agenda and concurrent their recommendations?
So moved.
Second. My councilmember Pullman, second my vice mayor Ryan. Should we do a roll call vote on that one, too, since we took the one out?
Voice vote is fine.
Voice vote is fine.
Great, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now, I'll set the meeting that the regular meeting be recessed and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second, motion made by council member Fear, second by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. So we're going into that public hearing at 7:15. And I believe the regular meeting was reconvened around 7:12. So I apologize for not reading that into the record. The regular meeting was reconvened at 7:12. Went into the public hearing now. So want to read the public hearing in the record, please?
A public hearing regarding a request to amend the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, number 7503, by changing and establishing the zoning of and the corresponding zoning map for 990 North Third Street, P 6431 001 000004, 1000 North Third Street, P 6431 001 000005, and 1010 North Third Street, L 491 0026 000004, and L 491 0025 000027, City of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor. Well, hold on one second. Now, this is a zoning matter. We have to see anyone in the audience who should be heard at this public hearing? Anyone in the audience who should be heard at this public hearing involving the changing and establishing of zoning at those stated parcels? Anyone in the audience at all? Anyone on council who should make a comment? Make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Pullman.
Make a motion the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to council member Pullman, second to council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Public hearing is closed at 7:16. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Vaughn, second to council member Fear. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Regular meeting is reconvened at 7:17. And I go to pending legislation, agenda item number 14, second reading ordinance involving Highland Park Fence Overlay District.
An ordinance amending the Hamilton zoning ordinance by adding section 3700 Highland Park Fence Overlay District and amending the Hamilton zoning map by adding the Highland Park Fence Overlay District, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to council member Fear, second to council member Nab. Any discussion about this one? Okay, hearing no discussion, roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Want to go back one second and say, public hearing speaking book had nobody at all sign it except Jim Lottman. And that was on a topic that we addressed in the audience of citizens because it was not related to the public hearing issue. Other than that, no one else signed the public hearing speaking book. Okay, good, agenda item number 15. Second reading ordinance involving exchange agreement.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an exchange agreement between the City of Hamilton and CB Properties of Hamilton LLC as it relates to city-owned property located along the 1,000 block of North Third Street in exchange for CB Properties of Hamilton LLC-owned property along the 1,000 block of Maple Avenue, second reading.
Mr. Mayor. Vice mayor Ryan, I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to vice mayor Ryan, second to council member Pullman. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 16. Second reading ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, second reading.
Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second, motion to council member Fear, second to vice mayor Ryan. Comments, questions about this one? Roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 17. Second reading of an emergency ordinance involving broadband rates and policies.
So before I read that, Mr. Mayor, the executive director of Infrastructure, Evan Porter, is present tonight for a presentation on that. If you don't mind, I'd like to read that and then he'd provide a presentation on this item.
That would be great.
Thank you. An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 943 electricity of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton by adding section 943.20 broadband rates to establish rates and policies for providing broadband services to commercial customers, second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, for being with us to talk about this. We're all really excited about this, this whole project. Introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Hamilton community. My name's Evan Porter. I'm the executive director of infrastructure for the City of Hamilton. And I just want to take a quick moment to talk about fiber broadband update in a really exciting program that we're hoping to get started here. Okay, so let's talk about history a little bit. So in 2004, the city started to install a fiber optic network within the City of Hamilton for governmental purposes. And that system has grown and been maintained ever since. And in 2015, understanding that fiber optic network could be utilized to provide broadband services, the city started a pilot program through a third party by the name of Center Grid to provide broadband services to business customers. So around the same time, the city also started to lease what's called dark fiber. So essentially, there were additional fiber strands that were a part of our system for business use. So in 2021, the city decided to undergo a beta test. And essentially, what occurred is Center Grid no longer was offering the broadband services. And so the city determined that we would undergo a beta test to provide those services and figure out things such as terms and conditions, et cetera, and figure out a little bit more about our program. And that brings us to today, 2022. We're presenting legislation to be considered for the implementation of a permanent offering for broadband services by the city. Okay, so the beta test, so talk a little bit about that. So the equipment was transferred from Center Grid to the City of Hamilton and along with the equipment, the existing customers, so you can see the existing customers that came over included the Hamilton Mill, CDA, BCRTA, 80 Acres, during a hybrid TDN influx. So, next slide, please. So during the beta test, we did several things. So staff determined the terms and conditions of the program, created policies and procedures, updated customer agreements, updated fiber extension policies, determined service levels, identified and allocated capital and oanement expenditures as a part of the program, and determined a recommendation for a rate structure. The next slide, please. And by the end of the pilot program, so we maintained all the existing customers plus an additional three Saica, wildfire, Hi-Gay goods and interests from other businesses as well. Okay, so what is the program that we're offering? So we work through SWOCA, Southwest Ohio Computer Association, and we receive broadband services and distribute those to the business customers within Hamilton. Those broadband services are transferred across our existing fiber optic network. So new customers must pay to tap into the existing fiber network and bring that fiber to their business. And they must also pay for the cost of the necessary equipment to receive those services. So city staff is recommending five varying levels of service as a part of this broadband offering to businesses. And the city would be responsible for all aspects of this service just as any other utility such as reliability, customer service, billing, operation and maintenance, and various other activities. And so it's kind of something to point out, as we saw earlier, all the utilities, so for a business customer, that they get one single bill for all of those utilities. So this would just be one more utility that we added to the single bill for simplicity. And we think that's a real positive. Okay, so to go over the offering, the rates and the billing structure. So first of all, chapter 943, the codified ordinances would be amended and it would add 943.20, which is broadband rates. The schedule of the rates and charges would be kept on file with the city clerk, and these rates and charges would be continuously monitored and adjusted as necessary. However, the following levels of service to be offered are recommended above. I'm not going to read through all of them, but you can see there's five different levels of service and associated costs per month for that service. And the initial equipment cost would be about $5 per month. And the fiber extension cost, as we talked about earlier, is about $1,32 per foot for that extension. Okay, so that brings us to the future of the program. So I think it's important that, you know, with all utilities that the City of Hamilton provides, the intent is to provide, you know, local, reliable, affordable utilities to our customers and to provide those at the level of service that's requested by our community. And so that's the intent of this program. So right now, we are not contemplating offering voice-over internet protocol for residential usages. And if approved and moved forward, city staff would continue to develop the Hamilton broadband utility, including posting of rules and regulations, terms and conditions, updating our branding, integration into utility building and other related tasks. And a continuous focus will be placed on tracking all the costs associated with providing the services while looking at our rate structure and making sure that we continue to modify that as necessary. And before I ask your questions, I'd like to introduce Craig Markham. You want to come on up here? So when you think about what's really the face of Hamilton fiber, Hamilton broadband, this is the guy right here. So with that said, are there any questions about this program?
Well, I'm glad Mr. Markham's involved in this. I know he loves this area. That I mean broadband, but also he loves this area, Hamilton, Ohio. So you've got the right guy there. I'm not real smart about this stuff, but I'm smart enough to know how important this is to our city and our commercial customers. I think it's going to be another utility we're going to be all very, very proud of.
I agree.
Questions, comments? Mr. Mayor, please.
Evan, when you talked about some of the current business customers and things, would this be north, south, east, west, all parts of Hamilton? So for instance, if Kettering Hospital, if anything out in Enterprise Park, if something out in the North End or something out in Lindenwald, we'd have that access for this?
Absolutely, yeah. So for any business purpose, so we have an existing fiber network. And so once again, as long as the fiber network is close enough to justify the extension for those usages, yes, it'd be available.
Yes. Thank you. Question? Any other comments? Just keep us informed how this is progressing. I know this is going to be something we're very, very, very proud of.
I do, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Evan. So that's been read. We need a first and a second at this point in time. Unless there's any other discussion at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to council member Fear, second to council member Vaughn. There's no other discussion or comments. Roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We now go to agenda item number 18, which is second reading ordinance involving conveyance of real property to Neighborhood Housing Services.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area acquired through the land bank to Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton Incorporated, 1130 and 1134 Lane Street, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second, council member Vaughn, second to vice mayor Ryan. Discussion or comments? This is on Lane Street and the houses look real nice. So this is going to be a really good program, I believe. No other comments or questions? Roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 19, which is the first reading of an ordinance involving the classification of employee leave and workers' compensation administrator.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2021-12-12, adopted December 8th, 2021, as amended from time to time to establish the classification of employee leave and workers' compensation administrator, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 20, first reading of an ordinance involving zoning, North Third Street.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, number 7503, by changing and establishing the zoning of and the corresponding zoning map for 990 North Third Street, P 6431 001 000004, and 1000 North Third Street, P 6431 0001 000005, and 1010 North Third Street, and one thousand ten North Third Street, L four nine one zero zero two six zero 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 four, and L four nine one zero zero two five zero 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 two seven, save Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Just for the record, when will the second reading and the vote be on that, if anybody knows at this point in time?
I believe the, the second reading and vote would be at our next meeting.
Okay. Because there's probably some interested folks here, and I just, so they marched the twenty-third, then? More than likely.
More than likely.
Great. Thank you, we now go to agenda item number twenty-one, first reading of an emergency ordinance involving a second amendment to the development agreement, Rossville Flats Project.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a second amendment to the development agreement, property conveyances and related actions with Main Street Hamilton Apartments LLC for the Rossville Flats Project, first reading.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number twenty-two, which is a resolution involving the Butler County TID and ODOT funding Tyresville Road.
A resolution declaring support for the Butler County Transportation Improvement District, BCTID, to apply for the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT funding for the Tyresville Road reconstruction project.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, Senate Councilmember Knab. Discussion or comment on this? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Now go to agenda item number twenty-three, a resolution supporting Ukraine against Russia's invasion.
A resolution advocating for the support of a sovereign democracy of Ukraine and requesting that Hamilton's elected delegation in Columbus, Ohio, and Ohio's elected delegation in Washington, DC extensively support Ukraine against Russia's invasion of Ukraine.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Fear. Excuse me, Mr. Councilmember Fear, Senate Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion on this? Before, we would like to read it into the record if I could, because this will actually go to Columbus and Washington, if that's okay. Everybody going to read this? Okay, whereas in nineteen ninety-one, the people of Ukraine voted to form an independent nation from the Soviet Union, creating a republic with legislative, executive, and judicial branches after years of Russian oppression, including by means of forced famine. And whereas in two thousand fourteen, the Russian Federation had illegally seized Ukrainian land on the Crimean Peninsula after deploying mass troops and weaponry and seizing the Crimean Parliament. And whereas on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, the Russian military began an unprovoked invasion of Ukraine with no justification or necessity. And in the ongoing invasion, has committed crimes against humanity by targeting apartment buildings, residential areas, schools, government buildings, as well as now healthcare buildings, separating families and creating approximately, I believe now, two million refugees. Whereas the people of Ukraine, military troops, and civilians have fought bravely in defending Ukraine and democracy from this invasion. Whereas multiple states, United States, including Ohio, which has thousands of citizens of Ukrainian descent, and multiple countries internationally are pledging near support of Ukraine during this brutal invasion. And whereas Hamilton City Council requested Hamilton's elected delegation in Columbus, Ohio, and Ohio's elected delegation in Washington, DC extensively support the people of Ukraine. And we request elected officials to put aside partisanship and aggressively impose sanctions and provide meaningful support. That is the resolution, and I'm reading that, we're reading this all in memory the young and old of Ukraine who have died thus far and in honor and support of those who are fighting at this point in time. They're fighting for freedom and democracy. And I believe when democracy is in peril, as it is now, all of us should be concerned, in the United States, cities, villages, townships, I think we all should. And that's all I have to say. Is there any other comments or discussion before we give a vote?
I appreciate the people of Ukrainian, Ukrainians toughness. I believe them going out in the streets and defending their freedom, and I appreciate their leader who stands up and says, I'm not leaving, I'm fighting. And I think that's something that the whole world should see and use as a model. Such great respect for the citizens who go out and defend their own country on their ground.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you for reading the resolution and sharing what we, on your city council, had wished that we would be supporting, and that feeds back up to Columbus, feeds back to the federal government. I confer with, with Councilman Lauer, the respect that we have, the resilience and the fortitude of young and old alike in taking their position to defend their homes, civilians that are working hard to protect their own country and, and help the military that they have. So, Pat, again, thank you for, for sharing our resolution with everyone this evening.
In the comments. I read a Washington Post article about a fifty-year, fifty-four-year-old child psychologist. That's the man's career. He's a civilian, not a soldier. And he was killed in a gun battle fighting against the Russians. The Russians actually bombed the cemetery the day he was supposed to be buried. And he was killed driving the family car, not a military car. That's the kind of stuff that's going on right now. And Ukrainian national anthem actually has a line in it. I had to pull it and read it because people were singing it, and they were, one of the lines is, "We'll not spare either our souls or our bodies to get freedom." So, if there's no other comments, do a roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We now go to the audience of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of short items. First, I want to thank Councilman Lauer for extending an invitation to speak at the Hamilton Freshman School earlier today. Mayor Mohler, Councilman Knab were also present, gave us an opportunity to speak with several students that represented the seventeen neighborhoods of Hamilton. I would call it a very robust conversation, a lot of very good insights and questions from the students. And I started working on one of the requests later this afternoon, and I hopefully I'll have a positive announcement in two weeks on that. There was a lot of anger about the skate land being demolished, and I think we might have a small solution to that. Second item I want to talk about, we missed caucus item number eight, which was providing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the CIC. I just want to make sure that we had a chance to have this conversation before the first reading of the legislation. And actually, the CIC came up earlier, and I, I thought it was some interesting background, but the CIC was created in Hamilton. The Community Improvement Corporation was created in Hamilton in nineteen sixty-six. Joe Markham, the former president and CEO of Ohio Casually, was one of the founding members of the CIC. And it was created, and I'll read this directly, from the Articles of Incorporation, "to advance, encourage, and promote the industrial, economic, commercial, and civil development of the City of Hamilton and the area surrounding it." The request on the caucus agenda that you'll be voting on is to provide the CIC an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the, in the next couple of meetings. And the money is primarily going to be used for Main Street area redevelopments. Roughly half of that will be for some additional parking area. I was on Main Street with Director Scormesi earlier today, and the traffic seems to be thickening again. And we certainly need to keep making whatever improvements we can to help keep traffic off of the Main Street, which in turn will also impact the High Street traffic as the primary arterial through Hamilton. Any small changes we can make to help that, I know the residents will appreciate. Item sixteen on the agenda was you approve the second supplemental, supplemental appropriation. And I just wanted to make a note, just for the, more for the public's sake, but twenty-five million, over, a little over twenty-five million of the thirty-two point six million that the city received in ARPA funds will have been either encumbered or spent after that second supplemental appropriation. And really, it boils down to three primary areas. One of them is public safety. Fourteen million dollars has now been allocated either for the Justice Center for the Police Department or for a new firehouse for the firemen. So, that's fourteen million dollars. We had seven million dollars set aside for North Hamilton Crossing construction. So, that's fourteen and seven, so that gets us to twenty-one million. Another two point two million of that, of those dollars have been set aside for storm sewer improvements, which is facilitating some of the street improvements that we have been working on. Corwin Avenue in particular was a very large project. So, a lot of those storm sewer funds are going to Corwin Avenue in Lindenwald. So, I think the public might have an interest in where those ARPA dollars are being allocated or spent. And just want to make sure we called those out. Finally, Rossville Flats, the earthwork started in earnest yesterday, a lot of activity again today. Main Street's going to be very busy with Agave and Rye starting construction in, in May. Rossville Flats under construction now. The demolition permit's been pulled for the former Steak and Shake. So, the Panda Express will be moving very quickly. I talked with Ken Rivera, a building inspector. He said they have a very aggressive schedule, but so the full breadth of Main Street's going to see a lot of activity in two thousand twenty-two, and we'll try to keep council apprised of that in case you have questions from the public. But that's all I have, thank you.
Audience of the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just want to bring to everyone's attention, like, with the caucus agenda, I'm so glad that we are doing this. So, I want to thank everybody that comes to do it and give us the report. And when the mayor says, are there any questions, and we all shake our head no, I hope you never feel like, then why am I here? Because I do get a lot of response from people that watch this on TV Hamilton. And, and they feel like it's beneficial to them to understand it a little bit more. And if they come up with a question, then I've called to find out. So, I just think this caucus agenda and you guys being here is invaluable, and I want to thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
Appreciate you coming today. Mr. Knab, I appreciate you coming, and Mr. Bates and Joshua. I would like to open that to a few other people on our team in the future. You're more than welcome to come. It's a great program, and I think we're doing great things with it. We have a very active youth in our town, and they are, they have so much pride in this town, and they want to see it continue to prove, I think that was repeated quite a bit today. I'm thankful that you guys came today.
Is this, how often is this?
It's once, I believe, every two weeks.
So, you'll send, because I was at, but she let us, we don't have to play dodgeball every time, do we?
No. Just the mayor.
I might just mention that tonight later on, now that you did mention that. Councilmember Lauer, I just want to say that, that those young people, the Hamilton Freshman School, we would be all so very proud of them, the way they handled themselves during the discussions. And, and city manager, I just want you, skating is, was like a rite of passage in elementary school. Okay? Everybody skated somewhere in Fairfield or Hamilton, I'm not kidding you. It was, but now, about the dodgeball.
A lot of knees are getting scoped after that skating, though, at this age.
About that dodgeball, we called it Kentucky artillery. Back when I was in junior high school, and you may know Larry Wood?
Yes.
Larry Wood is my gym teacher. And he told the guys, my name is wood, the floor is wood, you guys have wood in your head. I mean, that's just the way gym, gym, gym stuff was, was in the days, it's a very funny thing. I'm going to remind him of that, if you don't mind. But the dodgeball, that whole event at the after-school program was great. Councilmember Vaughn and I were there. You got volunteers running it, and the students voluntarily coming after school to at least check up on their grades, see what they're behind on. And if you don't play dodgeball, you, you've got an engineering class, you can do three D-type projects, or you can do art. I mean, it's, it's just a really well-put-together program. And again, thanks for making that aware to all of council. I know Councilman Knab, I think, talked to some people there, and I know he'll probably come on back again. Couple more real quick things, and then I'll quit talking, and you'll all be happy about that. Brigadier General Lawrence Gillespie was awarded a key to the city back in November of two thousand twenty-one. And he is so proud of that key to the city. He was in town this past week, and he's offered his services to provide any kind of leadership focus groups that the city manager one may want to have. This gentleman is well-respected in the, across the entire country. Showed me a picture of him with the Secretary of the Army. He's always in Washington, DC doing things. Great guy, impressive man, cares about this town, lives in Virginia, but he comes back here. And his brother's being inducted into the Hamilton High School Hall of Fame. Don Gillespie, he was a coach of Garfield's basketball team for a number of years. And lastly, I read in the paper somewhere that Fairfield's trying to do a CIC now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I mean, I think that's, that's a good thing for the entire community. It's good for Fairfield, but it's, it's nice that we have established, I think, a template of how to do CIC projects, Jody and his staff and the like. And the mayor fearful contacted me, he would like to start up the Hamilton Fairfield Task Force again. So, all of council, keep that in mind, because one of the great projects that we did was Joe Nuxall Way. And it's a project that Joe Nuxall was very proud of. And there's other things that we can do with Fairfield, because obviously they are a bordering city. So, I guess. Anybody else have anything else they want to add at this time? Okay, is there a request for an executive session, Mr. City Manager?
There is not, no.
What?
Everybody shocked?
Shocked into silence.
Over to the silence?
Yes, I don't know, how you want me to answer that?